All right, we'll go ahead and call to order our July 11th Comprehensive Planning Team Meeting. Did everybody have a chance to review the meeting minutes from way back in May?
Yes.
Did anybody have any edits?
No.
All right, we will go ahead and call those approved. I appreciate everybody's flexibility last month in canceling our June meeting when I wasn't feeling well. So hopefully we can get the show back on the road.
You can cancel meeting anytime you want.
Especially in the summer. I know that summer evenings are precious. So I appreciate everybody volunteering their time to be here. Which leads well into Agenda Item Number Two, discussing where we are in the planning process and our next steps. So I like to check in every once in a while, just to kind of clarify where we are, where we're going. So nobody loses interest or wants to wander away. So our survey is ready to go. I just got notification that the info@canadice.org email address is set up. So I will work on getting the MailChimp account set up, which we're hoping is going to house our survey. So I will get that set up. I'd like to get the survey entered and then distributed to you guys just to run through it and see if everything is working the way that we want it to work before we distribute to the public.
So can we do like a test survey or and then you can wipe the data from that?
Yeah, I think so. I gotta get in that program and play around with it a little bit. And I'm happy to share that. I know you're, I feel like you're pretty handy and stuff like that. So if you want to take a look around at what that platform has to offer. If we're not happy with that platform, there is the Survey Monkey platform and we did budget for it. The MailChimp is just free. So we were sort of leaning towards that. So we, you know, we've got that behind us. I think the next thing, and we'll talk about this a little bit later in the agenda, is kind of talking about what we want to do for public outreach and public meetings. And then as we get those scheduled, we may have a meeting or two before they happen, where we actually start diving into the comprehensive plan. I know we haven't really even looked at the existing plan. I don't know if you guys have read it on your own.
Yeah, I've looked at it.
So basically, I think what we'll do, once we get our survey out and responses are coming in, we get our public meetings figured out, we'll assign a certain number of sections and we'll say, okay, next time we meet, we're going to talk about these parts of the plan. I don't think we'll need to read through them together. We'll just talk about any comments, like, I think this is great, or I think we need to update this.
And you're thinking public meetings after we have survey results?
So I think we need to do at least two public meetings.
But I'm.
I think we need to do one while the survey is still open. And then we'll do one after the survey results come in. There's like a public hearing before adopting the final plan. But to me, it makes sense to do the public meeting. And that's one of the, we're kind of skipping around, but I think that's okay. I have a few questions about the Ontario County contract with the Planning Department, and they use a lot of different terms. They use.
Well, I, one previous planning, you know, open meeting or whatever you want, was more like a charrette where they had, you know, people put up ideas and things like that. So it might be nice to know what the results that we can kind of share with people before they put up their ideas, or do you want to do that before?
I, to me, I would like to still have the survey open because those people may not have filled it out. Like they also like, let's come, and definitely something like that where I envision something that's sort of interactive or engaging with people. And we can also, we can have hard copy surveys available. We can have, you know, the QR code printed out. So if people want to take the survey while they're here, they can certainly do that.
I'm really opposed to the hard copy. Just because I'm not doing data entry.
Yep. I think we're going to have limited people who need hard copy. I think most of the people will be able to take the survey online, but we do want to make sure that we're being as inclusive as possible.
Yeah, I know. It was suggested they get handed out at the concerts or something, but I think that's, you know, we want to, well, we want to keep it within the town. Because you get other people. And that's where the postcards are going to generate. And to get the Lakers out of the concert. Right. Well, you could get people to live in Richmond. I mean, that was when Richmond did it. They had signs all over the place and I'm thinking anyone could fill that out, but we have no way of restricting people once they have the website.
Well, and I know, you know, Supervisor Vestola is very passionate about the comprehensive plan. And I think that he really wants to do some in public engagement he's planning to attend. So maybe we just have additional extra postcards or something that he can hand out that has the QR code on it. If he feels strongly that he wants something to distribute, he's going to have to be able to filter, like, are you a town of Canadice resident? And in that case, he can share something that has the QR code or the website on it for people to take.
Let me get this out.
We need to get the survey enter, the survey has to be ready to go. So that's really been our big delay is I needed the info@canadice.org to be set up so that I could set up the MailChimp account so that I could set up the survey. So I will do my best to move quickly on getting that MailChimp account set up and and getting the survey entered in there and making sure that's going to work for us. So.
That'll be two or three weeks probably, right?
I would think by the time I get it set up and by the time everybody has a chance to like look through it and make sure it works and make sure that we can extract. My biggest concern, I think, is being able to get the data out in like a usable form. I think that may be one thing that Survey Monkey may have better, like, internal analytics. Like, I'm sure we can get all the raw data out, but some of the other platforms may be able to like show you trends and things in the data a little bit more efficiently. So. Questions are done. Yep, questions are done. It's just a matter of putting them in, getting the account set up, putting them in, and then making sure that the platform has all of the functionality that we need it to have. That it's easy to use, that it works well on cell phones, tablets, and computers. While you've got a tablet, so you're going to be our tablet tester. So you can take it on the tablet. We, you know, most of us have phones. We, a couple of us can test on the phones. We can test in our lab.
Work on everything.
Yep. So we'll just want to double check that and then how the data comes out. Okay, so that is half of our Agenda Item Number Three, Digital Communications. The dot org versus dot gov, I'm told, is going to be four weeks. Which it's, I feel like it's, I've been told that a couple of times, but Kate Crowley basically said that it's really out of their hands, but they're being told four weeks.
We'll go with Canadice.org.
Yep. So we're going to just plan to go with Canadice.org. It's going to be forwarded anyways.
And the QR code right now takes us to a page for, it explains what a comprehensive plan is.
Yes, so. The.
But that's going to actually be the survey.
So I, we, I apologize if I didn't respond to your email about this. We had had an initial conversation that we would have like a landing page.
Yeah, which is what I'm assuming the QR code takes us to a landing page.
Yeah, so.
Right now, it's what a comprehensive plan is.
Yep.
But I wasn't clear if you're on the Canadice.org homepage, I didn't see a way to get to this page easily.
No, so I do think on the Canadice.org homepage, we should maybe link directly to the survey.
And also the landing page. And will we have a survey at the top?
Yes.
Okay, so and then below that will be what, you know, what is a comprehensive plan?
Survey right at the top of this. So what is a comprehensive?
And then at the bottom, it says click to download the current plan. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that what we're landing on is, the first thing you're going to see is the survey.
Yes. Yep. We'll put the survey right at the top of this page. And then we'll we'll need to work with Mark Malmond dear to take a look at the homepage and we'll want a link to this, because as soon as we get this MailChimp program set up, people can start signing up to receive emails from the town.
Right. And I thought it said, "Survey is due by nine o'clock." Would that be adjusted? Yeah.
Yes. So I think whenever we get the survey out, what did we decide? Two months? Did we think that was long enough? Okay, so whenever we are ready to go to the printer, we'll say, okay, they're going to print and go out.
Just as a interesting point, I noticed that the town of Richmond is just getting their comprehensive plan done. And I think they started like three or four years ago.
Yes, I we're not going to take that long. We, you know, we, we set a really aggressive goal of one year when we started this process. I think we're looking at more like 18 months at this point. The survey, finalizing the survey took longer than I thought it would be. We canceled the June meeting, but I don't anticipate ours taking three or four years. I think that we're moving.
If you can get back by COVID first.
Yeah.
Be good.
Yes.
So yeah, I'm just, it just was a note. When I saw that, I'm like, what?
And I think often what happens, and this is when I had my initial discussion, like a year before we even started meeting, I had a discussion with Linda Phillips about, you know, I was going to be chairing this committee and, you know, advice. And one of the most meaningful pieces of advice she gave to me was, don't get started like before you're really ready to roll. She's like, or, you know, if you start and stop and start and stop, you lose members of your committee and, you know, the process can just get really muddy at that point. So that was really why, you know, starting in January made sense to me to kind of get some ducks in a row prior to starting that so that once we start, we're ready to, to keep the ball rolling and moving forward and not take three or four years. Okay, let's take a look at the agenda. Okay, so we talked about the info@canadice.org. We talked about the survey. Ontario County Items of Note. So I am going to meet with Thomas Lyon from Ontario County Planning Department next Thursday, a week from today, to kind of discuss that contract. So I started a document kind of just going through, there's nine tasks listed. And sort of making some notes, like, I think we need help with this. I don't think we need help with this. Did anybody else read that contract or have any feedback? I know it's really kind of long.
I think it's not long. I think it's already decided.
It is. So I had a conversation with Supervisor Vestola to get some better direction. I was like, are you expecting us to do everything on this contract, or is this sort of just a menu of options that are available? And he was like, no, absolutely. You guys as a team, we can pick and choose which of these services we think we need help with and which we don't.
And we get 40 hours?
Correct.
It's a dollar amount. I don't, I didn't quite understand.
Yeah, ignore the dollar amounts.
So you want to be careful. So is that 40 hours going to include your meeting?
I would assume so.
Okay, so we want to track that, so we don't run over or we get shortchanged.
Yep. And the 40 hours is on an annual basis. So, you know, we're in July. So if we get through, if we decide we want tasks two.
Oh, so it's not a total?
Five and six. No, it's on an annual basis.
Oh, so 40 hours a year. So if we stretch it out five or six years. Yes, this, this says, this agreement, nights of 30, 24, and it'll end on December 34th, 2025. So that gives you a lot of time.
Correct. Yes. So I think most, many of these things we, I'm comfortable doing in-house. A few of the more technical things, I definitely think the tasks two, the analysis and mapping of existing conditions, I think that's the, the section we're going to need the most help with. They do note in there that the 40 hours of technical assistance is available and they plan to use it for that task two. I do, I'm going to ask more questions about the SWAP analysis and Task One, the strengths, weaknesses, future opportunities, and threats. I'm wondering if this is ever done as part of the community engagement. And I just, I guess I just want a little like, how that's done, if that's, if we've already covered that, or I feel like maybe we need to do a little bit more with that, but I need to learn more about what that is. As for the Community Outreach Task Three, we've pretty much already done all of that. We're not going to need assistance with the survey. I made a note here somewhere. I'm very confused with the difference between a vision workshop, a community focus group, and a public hearing.
And a public hearing?
I, well, I know what a public hearing is. But I guess the Vision Workshop Community Focus Groups, I'm a little there's also like, in this contract, there's like three community focus groups and two vision workshops. And I think this was written for a different type of community than.
Higher population.
Higher population. So I definitely think that you know, we need to whittle that down and figure out what pieces of those things we want to do and likely do them together.
I think to run a community focus group, it'd be nice to have someone who's outside of us run it, which could be someone from the county. I'm sure they are familiar with doing that or they do it all the time. Because then we're not trying to we're not directing anything or doing anything. They're kind of running it.
That, that's a, that's a really good note. And sometimes I feel like those can be a little bit adversarial. You know, depending on who's attending the group and what the topic is, so to remove this board from looking opinionated about, or that, sorry, we're not a board. We're just a, you know, a research committee special team. To kind of remove that partisanship from the process, I think is a really, is a really good note, Parch.
I mean, the Vision Workshops and, you know, Community Outreach is kind of the same thing.
That's what. I didn't understand why there were two different tasks, I guess. And, and maybe in other communities, they need to be, but.
Number four would be the Task Four and Task Three.
And Task Five, the Community Focus Groups.
Right. Yeah, we're gonna just getting people here is going to be difficult. We need some serious signage.
And we, remember, we decided that we would rather do two mailings. I think we should do a second mailing specifically.
Well, it sounds like the price of a mailing is such that we may be able to get three or four in there.
Yeah.
For the public meeting, but then also some signs and, I don't know.
Yep.
So wait, we can outreach to get more people to participate here? Have a flyer that I link and hand out? Anyone who walks into the door?
That was one of the notes, I think, in Task Five, the Community Focus Group, is that it's intended for people who want to input and participate but can't commit to monthly meetings for 12 to 24 months, I think is the timeframe they used in the contract. So I do think that Eileen is aware that we are like trying to get anybody to participate. I think she recruited Ryan.
Well, I'm thinking I could make up some quick flyer that she could give out. I don't know.
Sure. It certainly wouldn't, wouldn't hurt.
Just to let, you know, we have meetings every X number. Why couldn't you just have the postcard up here? Well, because the postcard has to be printed. I mean, I
Well, we, I.
No, I know. But I guess I'm, I'm saying a flyer, come participate, come join us. Free coffee and donuts. All right. Beer and cocktails.
I mean, I guess that is like what we, do we want to host it here? Or should we host it? Can, can we, we, like, you start to get into some, like, we'd have to talk to the attorney, like, could we host it offsite at, like, Bird House or something? Would we get better participation?
What you say, the initial reaction to the first cards are going to be sent out. See what that is. Maybe surprised, may not.
So the first, the, the first cards are going to really push the survey and that you can sign up to get emails from the town.
I'm thinking of a better way than just the four of us sitting here today, if we can sprinkle a few more in.
Absolutely. We are, oh, Kate Crowley is going to join our team as well. She was unable to attend today. But she had been looped in on a couple of things. And I was like, hey, do you want me to, you know, start sending you the emails that go out with the meeting materials? Like, we'd love to have you participate. So she's going to get the meetings on her calendar. She said she'd be glad to participate. And I think having someone from the town board would definitely be an asset. So we did get one more. But we are always, and the way that it's worded, I think on the homepage is helpful, you know, saying that we want as much community participation as possible. So definitely, anybody that ever wants to join this team, anybody that knows anybody that wants to join, please encourage them to do so. But some of these.
And they don't even have to join. They can just sit here and listen.
Absolutely. Some of these like workshops and focus groups that are a little bit more one-off, I think will maybe get a little bit more participation. And we'll chat, I have a couple more things to chat about that as we, well, I guess, while we're on the topic. So I did talk with Ryan Davis from Economic Development about the Ontario County just did that big housing study. So they, Supervisor Vestola had mentioned that they will come and do sort of a brief overview of the study with a little bit of a local focus, like how parts of the study particularly pertain to Canadice. So I reached out to him and I was like, is this something you would think would be a good fit as we are trying to plan public meetings and engagement? So they said, yes, it'd be a great fit. He does usually work with Tom Harvey from the Planning Department. He's the director. The two of them come and give a presentation. The presentation is an hour. So I think that it's, to me, I don't know how we do anything else. You know, like, we, like, having interactive things, like, do we have a half an hour before the presentation? And then I just think that an hour-long presentation, trying to combine anything else is hard. I, I do think it would be great to have them come out to the community and do the presentation. They said they really encourage all Planning Board, Zoning Board, Town Board members to attend. So even if we you know, we planned a couple of meetings and that, you know, that happened while our survey was open and we just even give a little bit of like, hey, did everybody fill out the survey?
So you're saying this presentation that they would do, it would be good to get people from the ZPA, the Planning Board, and the Town Board to come to it?
In addition to the public, yes. I mean.
I don't. Yeah, you don't know.
Well.
Could have five people.
Yeah, we'll be.
So that could, doesn't have to be one of our regular meetings. That could be a special.
Yeah, so I think it would be like a workshop community, like, maybe we have like two. Like, we do that one and then we have one that is more interactive.
This is after the cards go out.
Yeah, so postcards go out. The postcards and the survey, like, let's say August 1st, I think that's an aggressive deadline. No later than mid-August. So they're out, the survey's open, the people are taking the survey, and then we're gonna, we're gonna have these community focus group workshop things. So we try and get people to actually come in person. One of them, I would like to be very interactive. Where people can, you know, there's issues on the wall, or sometimes people are given those like colored dots and you put them on the thing that matters most to you as you come in. There's all sorts of creative ways to have like interactive, to understand what's important to people. A lot of the themes we've already talked about in the survey, you know, historic preservation, you know, environmental issues, you know, low taxes, you know, all sorts of things like that.
The housing thing that the county would put on is just a presentation on their results of their housing survey?
Correct.
So that's more just informational?
Correct.
It's not a two-way?
No.
Type thing?
It's very informational.
So we could have that anytime?
Correct. So I think.
You're thinking we're gonna take some of those results into the comprehensive plan or?
I think that they.
What they are first.
I've seen the presentation. I do think it's interesting information, especially for our Planning Board or Zoning Board and our Town Board. I think that it's good information to be aware of as we are doing the comprehensive plan.
Right, but the primary focus is more for the different boards of the town, not really us.
It's for both. I think.
Yeah, I mean, we participate.
Yeah, we're all Planning Board members except for Ryan.
Right.
So no, I do, I do think even if we weren't on the Planning Board and we were only doing comprehensive planning, I think the information is useful to. I think the information is useful to have for this process, um.
I guess I'm trying to get at, who's inviting them, should we invite them, or could the? Town board invite them like they did on the community. Energy, you know, whatever it was, what's the?
Climate smart communities?
Yes, they had them come in for half an hour and do a presentation.
Well, so that was what I was gonna say is, um. I think that maybe we do more of the public facing, like, we send a second postcard out and we list the two. Times we hope people will come in person, the interactive workshop and the informational housing. This is. Yeah, so I ga- I tentatively, I said I would chat with you guys, and I said likely we'd be looking end of August, early September. For these types of meetings, it's sort of what I was thinking, but I'm open to to feedback.
Whenever.
Whenever. Always like meetings, yeah.
Um, I don't think, I think two. Obviously, we'll have to do a public hearing when the whole plan is finished at the very end. When we're all done with this process, there'll be a public hearing um during a town board meeting, that's a little bit different. Um, so that would be a third, but I don't think, I think the housing presentation and an interactive workshop. Is really maximum, I'm concerned if we had too many. We don't have enough people to get meaningful engagement, you know what I mean, I'm hoping that if we have two. That people will come. Yeah, so the first post, so I'm sort of.
Do is get the postcards, get the survey up.
Survey. Survey up, postcard up, and then um. We are going and. That that's really all ready to move forward as soon as we can get that. The survey in there, so that's, so while the survey's open. We'll have these public meetings, so I just kind of wanted to start having an initial conversation about that. While. I'm, before I meet with the county about the contract. So I just wanna circle back to what you said, Birch, so you're thinking the like interactive. Workshop, we should have somebody from the county?
To run it.
To run it.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And it'll be, if some of, our job will be getting people here.
Yes. Bodies in the door, that's the heart, that's the.
Roadblocks.
Um, okay, so back to the contract, um. Task six is land use and community facilities plan. I had a note that some of that may be helpful, um, but I think on probably a much more limited basis, like, we don't have a downtown. We don't have a bis- business district, um, so some land use stuff may be helpful to us. Um, but I don't know how much of ta- task six we will need. Um. So task seven, the implementation plan, I thought was interesting, I don't think. Much of that has been done in the past. Um, because most of our plans have really, the community feed pack has been maintained status quo. Um, so there haven't been like large goals that the plan sets out that there, you know. Citizens are wanting the the town government to meet, so I don't think there needed to be much of an implementation program. Um.
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting what the surveys give, I mean.
Yeah, so I.
Kind of everyone I talked to is the reason I moved to Canada, I suppose, because I didn't. Want anything to happen.
Yep, a- and I I anticipate we'll probably get um. A lot of similar feedback again, so with task seven, I think we may just need to like wait until. Further in the process to decide if we need to. Have any sort of implementation part in our plan. Um, as for tasks eight and nine, um, I do think, you know, sort of. Buttoning everything up and making sure that we get it approved, like doing all the seeker and stuff, I think assistance from the county. May be helpful in that.
Remind me what an EAF is, environmental assessment form?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. Um. And just making sure, we you know, we go through all of the the necessary legal steps in getting it adopted are. Uh, I think may be helpful, I'm not super familiar with those. Um, and then as far as adoption, um. I made a note, I'm comfortable presenting it to the town board for adoption, but after. What you said earlier, do you think that's something we as a team? Should be presenting our final product to the town board, or do you think that because it's a public hearing? Uh, we should have the county present the final product?
No, I think we should.
Yeah, cuz it's our work.
We're doing it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I agree, and I'm totally comfortable with presenting it, um.
I mean, the final, the town board needs a public hearing before they can vote it in.
Yep.
And that's, you know, people wanna. Say what they wanna do, and the town board wants to change it, they can go ahead and change it, but.
Yep.
I think as far as what we're doing is, we're gonna give them our final project.
Yep.
It's up to them what they wanna do with it.
Okay, I agree, okay, perfect, so it sounds like we're really all on the same page in regards to this contract, we sort of. Have identified uh the couple of tasks we think we need assistance with. Um. And I will um update you guys next meeting on um. My meeting with Thomas Lyon. Um. Okay, final review of the postcard, let me get my screen shared for that one.
So the phone number, we're using Ted's?
We are, yes, Ted, I agree.
My Google number idea?
I've never done that and.
Really easy, I mean, it's unbelievable.
I just didn't know if it seemed weird, like not having it a town hall number, like just some random phone number. I guess.
Use it and you're done, and you would get an email, whoever you want, would get an email for messages left there.
Yeah.
You can respond using that number, cost you like. Ten cents a minute at the most, I think, I don't. Tips.
Um, I think I'd rather use the town hall number, and I'm okay with, I told Ted, like, I would come in the first couple Thursdays after the postcard goes out.
I don't think you have to, I think.
To check.
I think there's, actually, I think, doesn't their system, they were mentioning that the. Meeting that it sends an email or something, if there is a message?
Yeah, he was saying so I to talk to.
So you don't have to be here.
There's a way that he thinks I can access it remotely.
So what is that number?
I'm not.
Three, six, seven.
We gotta, we gotta. Okay, let me see here, where is the? I think Ted's still here. So here's the the front of the postcard, just as a reminder. Yes. Yeah, it looks, it, Birch really did an outstanding job.
I don't, the only thing I could possibly. Is somebody, little technology like myself. Scan the QR code. Maybe a little more specific.
You mean like a note, like scan, scan me or something?
Yeah.
I do think that is good feedback. And we, I think we have space on the front where we could. Put just like a little arrow that says scan me.
Said, you got it, arrow.
Yeah, let's make, we'll tell Birch when he comes back in. Or scan the QR code. And we do say on the back, visit candidate.org or scan the QR code to take a survey and learn more. But I agree on the front, I I like that idea of an arrow that says scan me. You can also sign up.
And then half the time it doesn't work, and uh, you know. Been there for twenty years.
Yeah.
You gotta do your, your code, no deep, no deep, we can do that.
Okay, well, I think we're gonna get out of here in less than an hour, we've already, we've already covered agenda item six.
I gotta check my relatives coming up in August. It's not mine, it's my wife's relatives, she's got four brothers and sisters. Delaware, Maryland and Pennsylvania, they all come out in the summer.
Oh, nice.
You know what they say, it's.
Yeah, this is being recorded.
It's all true. Three, six, seven, two, zero, five, oh, extension five.
I thought extension six.
Six.
Okay, I knew the extension. I knew the extension, not the phone number.
Okay.
Uh, no, we were talking about.
Go ahead and change it, I'll keep you, I'll send you the document, you can change it.
One idea, just for illiterate tech people like me, is uh. We just put an arrow by the.
On the front here, just put a little arrow and then like scan me. Maybe in like white text or something.
Well, I can just say scan, right below it, I'll just say scan me.
Yeah.
Yeah, something like.
Yep.
That's it.
No, we were talking about what a great, great job you did, Birch, I wanna make sure we say that to your face, that we really think you did a outstanding.
So I'm gonna put the phone number. I'm kind of running out of space, I guess I'll put it down at the very bottom if I can.
Yeah.
I'm not really. That graphically competent, but.
Um, everything looks great.
So the only thing will be. The date.
Yep. Yep.
Do you want me to get everything to the printer and they could change the date since it's a Word document?
Um.
Or do you want?
No, let's, we'll send it, we'll send it to the printer once the survey's ready to go. Um, and then at that point, we can make it.
Cuz they can turn it around pretty fast, I mean, that would.
Yeah, he said, um. Yeah, he said in a couple of days.
And what was the, did you get, what was the pricing, did you get?
Yeah.
I know the postage costs significantly less.
Yeah, the postage is only twenty-eight cents, but again, that's before it goes up and.
Yeah, but even then, that's a lot less than we were thinking full.
Yeah, so the printing cost is three seventy-five.
For how many?
For a thousand. Five by, a thousand five by sevens, he said is gonna be about three seventy-five. The postage is about two eighty, um, it's forty dollars for them to do the. Like, print the addresses on the um. On the computer. Or sorry, on the postcard, uh, so it was a total of just under sev- about seven hundred dollars for.
For mailing.
Printing, postage, the whole thing.
And we budgeted how much?
We budgeted, where's my little budget thing? We budgeted twenty-five hundred for mailing.
Great, so we can do these other mailings, I mean, we can kind of flood it.
Yep, we've got plenty of wiggle room.
I think it's the best way to reach people.
Yep. Until we really build out this MailChimp program, it absolutely is. Okay, so I think that's all of our agenda items, um. We really, I think we covered the public uh agenda item six, the public meetings really well already. Um. Postcard is nearly developed, I'm gonna be on top of getting that survey out as soon as possible. Uh, any last questions, comments? Well, thank you guys all again so much for volunteering your time and your energy to the process, uh.
Thank you.
Couldn't do it without you guys.
Your time.
And we'll plan to meet. We will plan to meet. August. Second Thursday in August is gonna be August eighth. It is, yeah. So. So we'll plan to meet on August eighth at six o'clock. And I will. Keep an eye on your emails, I think it may be a busy month before then, and you'll probably hopefully see a couple of things come out from me before then. Alright, well, again, thank you all so much.
Be feeling better.
Thank you.